Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 6th meeting of the North Andover Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order and invite you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to head into public comment. As a reminder, per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anybody here to make public comment? Okay, then we are going to head right into licensing, so I would like to take a motion.
Motion to move into licensing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passing it over to you.
Thank you. We only have, we have one, we have one application, a request from PB Andover LLC, DBA Playables for a common vicular license at 137 Turnpike Street. Is there anyone here from Playables? Porting?
I think we did a couple tenants.
Nope, Playables. Yeah, just please. Can you state your, state your name?
Sure. How are you? My name is Hung Lam. I'm one of the managing partners for Playables, and we just opened up a couple weeks ago. Very excited to be here, and we just wanted to come in here and just confirm the common vicular license in regards to seating.
Okay. What type of restaurant is it?
Yeah, so it's, so Playables originated in New Jersey, and then my partners and I brought it up here to the Boston area. It is smoothie bowls, so it's acai bowls, smoothies, juices, and oatmeal, so.
And oatmeal.
Yeah, and oatmeal.
After all you said.
So, yeah, so, yes, so we, we just opened up 137 Turnpike, just right in that Eagle Woods Plaza there, so we serve us.
You're on like the left side of that?
Yes, we're the old, we're in the old subway.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Do you guys have smoothies too?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes, yep.
I think you got one.
Yeah, well, my kids will be.
Awesome. Yeah, and our hours are 8:00 AM till 9, 10:00 PM, till 10:00 PM, so.
Six days a week, or?
Well, every day.
Seven days?
Yep, all seven days.
How many locations do you have?
So, in the Boston area, 13.
Okay.
Yep, but throughout the, it's a franchise, but throughout the whole country, it's about 300.
Oh, wow.
So, so we started about six years ago, across from Boston College, where my colleagues and I.
My alma mater and your building right near the house that I grew up in. The house is gone now, though.
Got it, so, so my partners and I, we all went to B.C., so a friend of ours started it down in New Jersey and called us up and was like, "Oh, you should bring this up to Boston." So I live up in the Boston area, so I said, "Yeah, why not?" So that was our first one, and now we're at 13, so.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
I think there are a lot of very excited people.
I discovered you across from Boston College. That's when I first fell in love with playa.
She's been waiting for this day.
I've been waiting, I've been begging for this.
We're so excited to be here, because, you know, we try to immerse ourselves in the community, so we hire a lot of the high schoolers, and then we'll do a lot of stuff with the colleges or Meramec and, you know, any of the high schoolers, the high schools, North Andover, Andover, Phillips.
I would encourage you to join the North Andover Merchants Association. Check out the website, that's.
Absolutely.
Get you some great advertising, and it's a good group.
Great, great, yeah, we, we love any of that. We'll join all those groups, and we'll do sampling and do whatever. We're doing tomorrow, we're doing a fun run at one of the local schools in Milton, but then we just give out all the samples to the little kids. So we love doing things like that.
That's great.
All good for me.
Anyone have, folks have any questions or comments? I'll take a motion.
I'm with the Select Board, Acting as Licenses and Commissioners, approve the application from PB Andover LLC, DBA Playables for a common vic license at 137 Turnpike Street.
Second.
Any comments on the motion?
No.
Here and then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll see you soon.
See you tomorrow.
I'll take a motion to close licensing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I'm a principal with Heritage Strategies, and we were retained by the town to prepare
Aye.
Back to you, Ms. Chair.
Okay, moving on to the new business part of our meeting, Item A, the presentation
a historic preservation plan, following up on a item in your comprehensive master plan
of the Historic Preservation Master Plan.
from 2018, I believe.
I know that Zach is here to present the plan to us, and I think he has some others with
And let's go to the next slide. I'm, I'm having some vision problems, so if I need some assistance from Zach, I, I
him, so come on up.
may request it. Zach and Stan were actually our project managers, and they were working with us through the project, and, and brainstorming and meeting and gathering online.
Things are looking good.
It's always good when the technology works. And Andrew and Jean also put together a stakeholder group representing several of the committees and commissions, and we met with them at several points virtually during the course of the project, and we also, I also interviewed them individually, and they
I've never had this happen, where it just shows.
So it's not.
were, they were extremely helpful in providing background and insight into issues and, and
Yeah, usually it's just.
I thought it was ready to go.
Plug it in.
But it is showing, man, just give it a second.
management of, of, of the town as a whole.
It's just the menu bar at the bottom, it was showing.
Next slide.
Now it's not.
And also, we engaged with the other stakeholder groups related to historic preservation throughout, throughout the project, both mostly through a list of personal interviews, mostly conducted by Zoom, some in person, that gave us background on, on the issues that their groups were facing and how they were functioning. And I must say that of all the, of the communities that we work on, I'm impressed with the range and quality of the committees and commissions that you, that you have. And I'm also always appreciative of the Community Preservation Act and the Community Preservation Committee, which provides so many resources that are really transforming towns across the, across the Commonwealth, and yours has done a fabulous job as well. Next slide. And so I'm just going to walk through the table of contents. You would be able to see the plan if you haven't already. We completed, we completed the plan in the springtime, and it was reviewed over the summer by the planning office, and we have just completed changes that they requested, and so now I think it's in final version, unless we find glitches, and, and it's available for you to take a look at. But just walking through this table of contents very quickly, Chapter 1 is really about historic preservation principles and approaches, and in this, we are really looking, we're not, we're not looking to preserve everything in, without change. We are looking to adapt community character, really, and North Andover really has such strong historic resources, such strong historic areas, and especially bridging with the, with the Center Village and the Machine Shop Village and the Mills, and then the Out Country, such a variable landscape that is adaptable to, you know, modern, modern changes that are always occurring and will can occur into the future. So Chapter 1 really talks about historic preservation principles and how to use them to adapt to change while preserving historic character. Chapter 2 is an, is an overview of the town's historical development, and your, the book that the Historical Society sells, A Good Inland Town, is really a great document, and very thorough and very deep, and is really commendable for anybody who's interested in the history of the town. I'm sure you're familiar with it, and so we sort of keyed off and actually used their, their framing of historic periods, looking at, well, what are the causes for, for the different periods of change within the town, and what are the resources, the buildings, basically, that developed as a part of that? So let's go to the next slide. And Chapters 3, 4, and 5 are really the action chapters. That's where the recommendations are, and, and Chapter 3 is about what we call your historic preservation program, because we like to take all of your historic preservation committees and commissions and the work that they're doing, and, and, and look at them as a coordinated whole, and how do they impact the town. The main thing that we're looking to do is to preserve historic character and use historic character to, to support quality of life as things change over time. So in this chapter, we're looking at the, the Historical Commission in particular, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a, in a later slide, but we're looking at the inventory of historic resources, the National Register, use of the National Register of historic places. We're looking at the local historic districts, the Old Center Local Stark District and the Machine Shop Village, Neighborhood Conservation District, and other topics that relate to historic preservation. We're trying to coordinate them together into one large coordinated effort. And so Chapter 4, in contrast, is about planning for the town. So our goal is to work off of the comprehensive master plan for the town and other documents that you've prepared, and to, and to work, to see how historic preservation fits into those and supports the goals and objectives in the plan. And so the recommendations that we prepare, and if you look, if you look at the lineups, it goes, it talks about downtown, it talks about the Mill District and historic neighborhoods, and what we call Greater Old Center, which, because you, you know, you have the local Stark District around the Common, but the actual historic buildings related to the Old Center actually expand out into the farmland. And, and so we're looking at what are the objectives, the town's objectives with regard to those particular areas, and what are the issues that arise, and how can we use historic preservation to enhance those areas, and in accordance with the town's goals for those areas? So for instance, there's a lot of, there has been in recent, in the last decade, a lot of, a lot of focus on downtown, enlivening downtown, the streetscape improvements, the pedestrian connections, and you also have quite a number of historic resources downtown, so we're looking for how do historic resources support the goals of downtown, but it's, in large part, those are economic goals related to, you know, enlivening the streetscape. And, and so we tried, we're looking at how, how can historic resources help do that? And the similar with, you know, historic neighborhoods, we, we look at the areas surrounding downtown, and only Machine Shop Village has really gotten a focus with regard to historic preservation, but there are a lot of other neighborhood areas that, that are, have historic character, and what we anticipate is that as North Andover continues to be a desirable sort of suburban area to live, that those areas are going to intensify in their development and redevelopment, and some of the buildings are going to be adapted, we've used, some of the buildings, some of which are apartments, are going to more, be in more intensely used, you know, with additional dwelling units, with infill construction. And our goal, from a historic preservation perspective, is to, is to build that, use the, use the historic character of those neighborhoods for that future, that future development needs in, in, in a way that supports context-sensitive design and further enhances the character of the areas with the character that's inherent in the buildings and streetscapes that are, that are already there. So the point is really to try and frame historic preservation within the goals of the town and the change that you're anticipating with the, you know, perhaps intensifying of, of dwelling types. And is this to Chapter 5?
Right here.
And Chapter 5 is about public enhancement or engage, public engagement, and what we've suggested is that partners come together to create a community-wide interpretive presentation with, and we met with the Historical Society, moved with the Improvement Society in particular with this idea, and the goal is to have interpretation happen out in the landscape and make, so that people who live here and experience it, but also to create North Andover as an attraction as a whole. So you have so many really outstanding historic resources that people can visit, and if you look at, so what we suggested was that you look into the Stevens Center as the place you would go to visit first, right, the Historical Society, and have, have an exhibit there that talks about this, the town's development over time, going back really to natural history and including, you know, Native Americans and into the early European sentiment up to the present. And, and then from, from after that initial experience, go out into the landscape to some of your premier attractions, like the Stevens Coolidge House and the Johnson Cottage and the Barson.
Parson.
Parson Barnard.
Yeah.
House and others for, to, to look at historic resources that are widely known, but also then to go, to have a program of public outdoor enhancements that can be located anywhere to talk about the places where they are, in parks, along trails, downtown, using public art and using exhibits to tell the story of the town and the particular places, and tie it all together into a single, into a single storyline. The goal, again, being to, you know, a visitor destination, but also enhancing public awareness of the character of the town, how it all fits together, and, and how it, and, and how it, how people, it enhances quality of life. And the next slide is, so I can't read this.
It's a.
I'm going to ask Zach to read this, because this is the whole idea.
Yeah.
Can you read that vision statement?
Sure, it just says, "North Andover has a rich and distinctive history that is cultivated to support community goals and enrich local quality of life."
And that's really what we're trying to do with the entire document, every little part of it contributes to that. Let's go to the next one. And the, the first goal is really to preserve historic resources to the extent possible, and we need to understand that change happens, but we are looking to preserve historic resources wherever they are within the town as appropriate to the context in, in which they are located. What's the second one?
Raising public awareness.
Raising public awareness is really, the main goal is, is through the community. Our main suggestion, at least, is in the community interpretive program, but also we'd like to encourage the Historical Commission and other entities, and the local Stark District and the Conservation District, to provide resources to property owners for, so they can understand their, their, their buildings and their properties and treat them appropriately. What's the third one?
Community goals and initiatives.
And that's with the planning, and so we're looking to embed historic preservation ish, historic preservation ideas, concepts into planning as the town continues to change and grow over time. And the final one is, is about providing, providing tools, really going back to, one of the recommendations I'll mention in a moment, is about design guidelines, providing design guidelines for the owners of historic properties. Let's go to the next slide. And this is about the Historical Commission. So the role of the Historical Commission is really important, and number one, they're supposed, supposed to inventory, keep an inventory of historic resources, and they've really done a good job with that, going back to the 1970s. There are resources in the downtown, in the neighborhoods adjacent to downtown that haven't been inventoried, but they, but you have, you have a good inventory, but it can continue to be built out. But the role of the Historical Commission is really to be aware of what's happening in other town bodies and in town initiatives, and to provide, provide advice and guidance to those bodies for, on issues that relate to historic preservation and the historic character. And so we like to, for instance, suggest that Historical Commission members be liaisons to the, the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission and other, other bodies to just be aware of what, of what those bodies are doing, what issues they're facing, and if any of those issues relate to historic character and historic resources, to provide them with input and guidance as appropriate. And, okay, let's go to the next slide, and this one is.
Old Center Historic District Commission and Machine Shop Village.
So you, your two, your local Stark District and Conservation Commission are doing a good job. You know, we did interview, and, and they, you know, there are always issues that arise, there are always conflicts that need to be overcome, but, but for the most part, they have been working diligently, and I think the results are, are good. So we want to support their work and provide them with the, the guidance in, say, Chapter 1, about how, about flexibility and preserving historic character while, while accommodating change. Okay? And this one is.
Planning context.
So the planning context, I can't read this slide at all, but I will just really go back to, and I think it's really just a repeat of what I said in, for Chapter 4 of the plan, which is understanding the different areas of the town, what are the, and what are the historic landscapes, what are the historic resources like, and, and where, where, how are they changing, and how can we, and how do historic resources contribute to that change over time? And then I think this is.
Potential projects.
Potential projects, so these are just a few of the ideas that we put on the table, and nothing that we put in the plan is mandatory. The first one, I think, is called working groups, and that is really to suggest that the different preservation constituencies meet at least once a year to quote, to align their agendas for the year, align their goals for the year, and see that, how they can support each other, and then go throughout the year, look to work together to achieve common goals. What's the second one?
Certified local government.
Certified local government is a, is a program that's presented by the federal government through the National Park Service and run by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. When you become a certified local government, there are certain guidelines that you, that you need to meet. You are eligible for additional grant funding, which you can use then to match to your CPC funding, and also technical assistance. Now, the Massachusetts Historical Commission is certainly under financial stress, but they, but if you look at, they do give out grants to any community, but I think there, you know, tell me how many there are communities, there are 300, 400, 300-something communities across the Commonwealth, and there are only about 30 are certified local governments, and 10% of the money that comes from the federal government to the Massachusetts Historical Commission has to go to certified local governments. You all qualify because of the, your ordinances, your bylaws, and because of your local Stark District, and so you could easily qualify for that additional grant opportunity, so we're suggesting that. What's the next one?
Phased inventory of the neighborhoods running downtown.
And I mentioned that we found in the inventory that really the, the neighborhoods north and south of downtown have been largely overlooked during the early inventory period because they were concentrating on the most important ones. But it's time to, it's time to fill out an inventory, it's not critical, but to sort of raise awareness, see what's there, I mean, we, you can see what's there, but to raise awareness about what those resources are, and then leading then to encouraging their appropriate treatment. And is the next one, design guidelines?
Yeah.
And that is where we suggested that design guidelines for historic preservation be prepared under the, under the leadership of the Historical Commission, but really for the whole town. And so the guidelines for Old Center will be different than, somewhat than the guidelines for Machine Shop Village, which will be, may be different for guidelines within those neighborhoods, I'm suggesting, but we want the design guidelines to be useful to any owner of historic property. Is there a legend?
Lookout reach for appropriate treatment of historic buildings.
And that's where the point of the interpretive program is to raise that awareness, but then we'd like the, both of your three preservation entities, the Historical Commission, the Historic District Commission, and the Conservation Commission to, to proactively reach out to property owners and, and encourage the appropriate treatment of, of resources. I think that's our last slide. The one place where we didn't reach out as thoroughly as I would like is in engagement with the Conservation Commission. There's really, there's a section of the chapter that talks about land conservation, about historic landscapes or heritage landscapes, and, and they, there's just such a synergy between landscape, landscape conservation and historic preservation. I would like to have had a more of a personal role with them, but we also think that they'll be interested in interpretation along the trails. Your, your lands, your natural landscape is really interesting, cultivated, you know, shaped by the, by the glaciers, and it's different from east, from east to west, and I think that interpretation of your natural landscape leads to an understanding of how the landscape was used over time by the peoples, both Native American and European settlers in different periods during your history. I think that's it.
Any questions?
The Olmsted Park, which is behind the, the library.
Yes.
You're familiar with that?
Yes.
I, okay, just wanted to make sure, because it is just a beautiful park, and we do have some people in town that have put a tremendous amount of work into that park.
Yep.
So that's interesting.
And.
And then we, we also have what is, the Barker family was one of the first settlers.
Right.
And they're still there.
Yep.
And nice, nice family, and they, they love their property and what they do for North Andover.
The farm.
Yes.
And there was, there was, there was some discussion by members who we, who we met with, who were really interested in preserving farmland, so, and that's a place where land conservation intersects with historic preservation, and, yeah.
Great, great family, great piece of land, and a lot of history.
Yep.
You know?
And where I come from, we're based in Pennsylvania, outside of Philadelphia, we have a lot of land trust activity, a lot of ag preservation activity, and which sort of demonstrates how preservation can happen if, if the resources can be brought to it, and, and there's the interest of the property owners in town.
I mentioned this at our last meeting, that Olmsted in upstate New York, Watertown, New York, built a zoo. I'm not kidding, and he made it all blend in to the natural scenery of upstate New York with native animals to the, to where it is, and it's, it had, it had touches of what Olmsted did in our, for our park. It was, except the native animals aren't there.
Well, your park is, well, you might see more of them than you might wish.
Yeah.
You know, given the sort of open space that you have with the, you know, Osgood Hill and, and other natural areas, your park is very nice, and of course, it's closely tied to the neighborhood just to the north of it, as well as to the library, and so it really creates a cohesive unit.
It does.
Sort of in the heart of the town, you know. And there was, there was, there was some discussion by members who we, who we met with, who were really interested in preserving farmland. So, and that's a place where land conservation intersects with historic preservation. And, yeah.
Great, great family, great piece of land and a lot of history.
Yep.
You know?
And where I come from, we're based in Pennsylvania, outside of Philadelphia. We have a lot of land trust activity, a lot of ag preservation activity and which sort of demonstrates how preservation can happen if, if the resources can be brought to it and, and there's the interest of the property owners in town.
I mentioned this at our last meeting, that Olmsted in upstate New York, Watertown, New York, built a zoo. I'm not kidding. And he made it all blend in to the natural scenery of upstate New York with native animals to the, to where it is. And it's, it had, it had touches of what Olmsted did in our, for our park. It was, except the native animals aren't there.
Well, your park is, well, you might see more of them than you might wish.
Yeah.
You know, given the sort of open space that you have with the, you know, Osgood Hill and, and other natural areas. Your park is very nice and of course it's closely tied to the neighborhood just to the north of it as well as to the library. And so it really creates a cohesive unit.
It does.
Sort of in the heart of the town, you know, as you travel, as you travel from east to west.
It's, it's a very enjoyable park and from people all over, to tell you the truth. They come and they bring their lawn chairs and gather and talk. So it's all good. But I was just wondering if you were keyed in on that particular property.
Yeah.
I figured you were, but I thought of that.
I didn't, say, yeah, I, I'm not saying I looked at it in, in detail, but we did. We're very aware of its history and its relationship and, you know, how the Stevens.
Yeah.
Family.
Generously.
All the Stevens family has done and how it all connects together.
Yeah.
It's a tremendous asset, but you have a lot of tremendous assets.
We do. We have little vignettes all over the place.
Yeah. I mean, Osgood Hill in itself.
Yeah.
And the, the hill adjacent trusts.
Wirehouse.
Yeah. I mean, what, and what, it's, it's, it's nice that you, you know, the lake is fabulous and that you conserve land around the lake for your water supply, but also it provides a tremendous asset to the town as a whole.
Yeah, we do allow people with not gasoline-fired boats to enjoy the lake and this is the perfect time.
Yeah.
You, as the foliage is just, you know, will soon be peaking, it takes your breath away, whether hiking or going out in a canoe or something like that. It's, it's great. I mean, it, it literally takes your breath away.
The design guidelines that you mentioned, is that making a more user-friendly document with, based on the bylaws or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so you do have guidelines in your bylaws, but it's sometimes hard to.
Sure.
Yeah.
You have to like dig it out, right?
A user-friendly document will have photographs, it will demonstrate issues.
Okay.
You know, some of it can be about proper maintenance, but it's also, you know, how do you adapt to cha, needed change.
Yeah.
In a, in a, in an appropriate way.
You, you reference our local, local commissions, right? Neighborhood district and Old Center. Presumably you've worked in a lot of other communities throughout the, is that common to have that many different commissions or is it typically all one?
And that was, and that was an issue that Andrew raised too. It, the, each of them, each of them has a different role. So the historical commission looks townwide and really tries to engage with entities and issues townwide. And then the two, the two, the committee and the commission are focused on their neighborhoods. And the local historic district, the, the Old Center local historic district, you know, is, it's, it's a high-end area and it's really, you know, people who have historic properties in those, in that area, they know what they're doing and they usually have the means to do it properly. And so they, you know, it's a, it's a really high quality, it's the best, the best you can see. And the neighborhood, the neighborhood conservation district, Machine Shop Village, you know, it's working-class housing and, and so, you know, it's simpler, it's easy to preserve actually because it's mostly wood-framed, small-scale buildings and it's, so it's easy to do the right thing. Whereas in the Old Center, it might be expensive to do things that are appropriate to houses that are expensive and were expensive. In Machine Shop Village, it's a lot easier to, but you can also be, you can be flexible in some ways. So, so there, it's a bit different in terms of application of guidelines and that can be demonstrated.
One more thing, just, you referenced also a lot of resources, maybe perhaps expanding some of our historic resource areas. How do you see in other communities that blend with the town's goal, with the community's goal of, say, revitalization, right? So you talked about downtown. Does that make things more restrictive in terms of you trying to affect economic change downtown?
Well, we're not, we're not, we don't necessarily try to take a restrictive approach.
Okay.
We're really trying to be flexible, take a flexible approach, but demonstrate the value of good decision-making. And so we did not come in and recommend, and make recommendations for additional local historic districts or additional neighborhood conservation districts, but although you could do that. Rather, in, in those areas mainly, well, downtown itself, we're all for the revitalization of downtown, the enlivening of the streetscape, and it's a great place for public art and the kind of interpretation I was talking about, you know, that, that combines public art with interpretation. But the, the historic resources there, we would hope that they would be a part of the future character that you're trying to encourage there. So how do you use those resources? Through adaptive reuse and most of them are commercial already. Some are still residential in office, but we would, we would like to preserve the historic resources that there. And the new buildings that have been put downtown, particularly, you know, toward the western end, are pretty respectful of the, of the historic character already. And so there's a good, there's a good start there and we, we want to, historic preservation, the, the concepts of historic preservation to be a part of the downstrap, downtown revitalization project and the same with the neighborhoods. So our goal would be to incorporate preservation goals and, and methodologies into the planning process as you go forward, not necessarily bylaws and restrictions.
Thank you.
So it's been a pleasure to be here. You know, we get to visit communities and really delve into their history and, and their character. It's really character that we're interested in and, and you really have a great, you're lucky, you're located in a good location, you know, you've had good economic experiences. The Davis and Ferber Mill Complex is a fabulous success in my view. And, and I think that those are, you know, so I think you've, you've, you've done good and I'm sure that you will continue to do well.
Gave us a lot of food for thought, so appreciate your efforts and putting it all in one.
Please do take a look at it, if there's any way we can help and I hope, I hope the document is, is interesting to look at.
Well, I have to say to, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That North Andover is one of the oldest communities in the United States.
Right.
And we're really lucky to have that and it should be preserved and people do, they, they love it, they, and so I think it's, it's a good start.
And you've had a lot of public engagement already, public, public involvement, people volunteering their times as you do to, for the, you know, community betterment.
Did you know that we, and I forget where it is, a Revolutionary War cemetery? We have some Revolutionary War soldiers that are buried.
I'm thinking first or second cemetery.
Second.
Second?
Thank you, because I didn't remember that, so thanks for pitching.
Yeah.
What, what one?
Berry Farm.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Got to know our community.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
Pleasure.
We can move on to item B, which is the update on the ARPA funding. So I think that might be an Andrew item.
Trying to make sure I'm in a good position here so that people won't lose sight of this. Okay. For the record, Andrew Shapiro, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community and Economic Development, providing a brief, I will go through these relatively quickly, update on American Rescue Plan Act-funded projects here in town. This is what we'll be covering, just a quick refresher, our breakdown, project updates, and then we can discuss. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything I can. This is just a quick refresher, mostly for folks at home. What is ARPA? It came out of COVID. It was a bill signed in 2021, delivered over $350 billion to communities. We got a chunk, about 93 million, we can go, or excuse me, 9.3 million. Multiplied that by several factors, no.
No tax.
So that's, that's the original grant award right there, 9.3 million.
Only Joe.
Oh, well, we could do with 90 million, right? If you recall, in, here at the town level, we created sort of a internal review board to kind of look at projects coming in, proposed ideas by different department heads in areas of town, and then we made recommendations to this body, the select board, and you all either approved or altered or didn't act on certain projects. So as of last month, the beginning of that last month, all the original funding has been obligated, which essentially means dedicated to a project, okay? About $5.7 million, which represents 62% of the original funding, has been spent already. The remaining funds need to be spent, and this is per the rules put forth by the U.S. Treasury, need to be spent by the end of calendar, calendar year 2026, so next calendar year. And here's just a breakdown of the funding by category. Now, some caveats to mention here. I subjectively decided what fit into what category, so this is all my doing. And some categories, some projects are a mix of two and in a couple cases, three categories. So like a good example is the acquisition of 400 Grape Pond Road. So that basically represented an infrastructure water sewer project as well as open space preservation. It's kind of served both purposes. So some of these pie slices represent multiple, you know, they cross, they cut across different projects. And as you can see, the vast majority of our spending went towards infrastructure. If you take into account the 45% that was infrastructure water sewer, you add that to the infrastructure, kind of like roads and sidewalks, that's another five and a half percent. So that's about half your funding right there. Other major uses were obviously 5% COVID-related. So that was sort of the initial funding we used in the beginning to do some, you know, basically programmatic things in the initial goings to support the town. 18% went towards schools and then the rest is a mix of the other categories you see up on the screen, shown a different way in numerical format. You'll just see, these are the actual totals in terms of project funding dedicated to these different categories. I'll let that sit there for a moment so you can look that over or if folks at home want to take a look at that. And again, you'll just see, the, the vast majority is infrastructure water sewer. A lot of that's taken up by one major project, which we'll cover in a minute, which we can get to under the project updates. So the infamous mobile library, which I think was a good project, to be honest with you. It's a nice-looking van. I know the library is excited about it. It was originally budgeted at about $393,000. We have about $85,000 left that can be used towards staffing and operation of the vehicle and it's been delivered and soft-launched. I know you're going to be looking at a proposal later this evening to have like a story hour on the Common and that'll be enabled by this project right here. And I think, you know, we always talk about things with the master plan. The master plan does call for enhancing the library's presence in town and basically making it more accessible. I think this project does exactly that. So that's an update on that project. Sewer pump station upgrades. So this was the, kind of the big, this was the big nut for infrastructure water sewers. This is about three and a half million dollars total. So this is an update coming from DPW. They awarded a contract at the end of November 2024. This is in regards to the Jasmine Pump Station specifically. And initially, when the project fund was awarded, they did a total analysis of all the sewer pump stations in town to kind of look at their condition and what the issues were. They had a long lead times for several project components for the Jasmine Pump Station, 40 weeks in some cases. Mast dot approved a modified plan that does not conflict with the state's drainage system, so they had to look at that pretty closely. And then construction will begin later this month with installation of gravity sewer line. This and the install of a new pump station will continue through winter. A couple other pump stations to look at, Coachman's as well as Sailway and Winter Street Pump Station. So Coachman's, the ARPA supported the preparation of engineering documents to replace the generator, automatic transfer switch and other electrical components. CIP were used to purchase and replace the generator and related electrical components. And sorry again for all the in and out of the signal here. Sailway and Winter Street, the consultant prepared engineering documents to replace the generator, automatic transfer switch and other electrical components. Basically, so the town, the town also had to confer with National Grid on this to determine the cost for upgrading the power supply to both the pump stations. The total cost ended up being prohibitive to move forward on. So this doesn't seem to be moving forward. And I, I have very kind of cursory, high-level updates on this. I'm sure we can reach out to the DPW to ask for follow-up questions if you have anything specific on these, why didn't move forward, for instance? We can certainly look, look into that further. This is another DPW-led project. This is basically the relining of eight-inch cast iron water mains that were originally installed in 1898. The original budget was a $750,000 project. To date, both water mains on Sutton and Marblehead Streets, which are underneath the railroad tracks, have been cleaned of all the mineral deposits that are in there. They were then tested for bacteria before being reactivated and the next step is to install the structural liner and that'll prevent further material buildup, add strength to the cast iron. And the process just began, will continue through the month of October with a proposed completion date sometime, you know, in November, next month. So that's the project you're seeing out there with the coverings on Sutton Street.
How did you know that they were built in, originally in 1898?
That's a good question. You know, the DPW has detailed files on these things. So, yeah, I mean, but it's pretty interesting to note that you've got infrastructure dating that far back. I'm sure there's some pipes, some other infrastructure elsewhere in town that goes back further than that.
Interesting, scary.
Scary.
Some of the pipes actually would.
At least they.
The one on the dance studio.
Or when, when the gas didn't worry their bikes or something.
But that's the great thing about ARPA, right? It gives us, it gives us an opportunity to catch up on some of these things that get deferred for a while. And this is common in a lot of towns, that it's hard to keep up with this old New England infrastructure. Ray Street Sewer Connection there, approximately 230 feet of gravity sewer, that's going to be relayed to enable connection to the use of the new Ray Street Sewer Pump Station. This was originally budgeted $350,000. The new gravity line has been engineered and the existing gra, gravity lines have been cleaned, TV inspected, determined if any repairs to the existing gravity lines are necessary for activating them. And the town's in-house contractor is preparing the consul, construction estimate for the proposed new gravity work and coordinating with the Conservation Commission on proposed work schedule and anticipated de-watering that will be required. So this project's kind of in flux right now. It looks like they're going to have to go to the Conservation Commission for some approvals, but this is moving forward. Now going to something completely separate here, not having, not related to infrastructure, but the youth center staff enhancement, I thought this was a really nice project. It hired, it supported the hiring of a youth-focused social worker based out of the youth center and this is also shared with the schools. The original budget was about $172,000. It's currently occupied by Linaez Martinez and she has previous experience being employed by the City of Lawrence, Department of Children and Families, Lowell General Hospital as well as H-Ban. And the remainder of the funding will cover salary, but they're going to be looking to fund this as part of the regular portion of the budget going forward after this fiscal year concludes. We did an emergency response time study for the fire department. They saved us some money. They only had to spend about $5,000 on an original budget of 7,500. And it was determined that the best location will increase the coverage to the town from 43.2% to 51.1%. Those are very specific, based on the ISO rating. And so the FD will have, the fire department will have to complete a more in-depth study to determine the need for additional stations and personnel. So this is kind of an, this is sort of a precursor to, I think, a more in-depth study and look at the opportunity to build out a new fire station that will provide additional service and more coverage to the town for emergency response.
So it's a scale of one to 10, in case people are wondering, and it just basically has to do with a town's ability to respond to fire emergencies.
Thank you. Emergency services, so this kind of provided a wide range of funding for the fire department to do some things they needed to do. They expanded the training room so it could be used as an EOC, an emergency operations center. They replaced a stretcher for the ambulance. They outfitted a trailer for emergency shelter operations. They purchased a flat-bottom rescue boat to insist with increasing calls to the river and other bodies of water. And so this replaces an outdated boat from the 1970s and they also outfitted the boat with supplies and lights. Other initiatives under this program, they purchased a brush truck. So as you've probably seen in the news recently, we've seen a little more activity in terms of brush fires due to the drought that we've had over the summer. So these funds allowed the. So these funds allowed for the purchasing custom outfit of an apparatus that will provide better access, carry more equipment and water in the event that we could continue to see these types of brush fires. And that's a, that's a picture on the right of that new truck, and it's how it's outfitted. And it also replaced a hose that was destroyed in that fire, and it also purchased three new portable tri-band radios. That's all I have for right now. There are plenty of other projects, so this was just a sampling. I wanted to give people a taste of the things we've been doing, wanted to give you an overall sense of where we stand with respect to funding, and just update you on the fact that we've obligated all funds, and we're on track to expend all funds by the end of calendar year 2026.
Well, it's certainly a diverse list of, a little of something from every department, practically. It's great.
Could you move back to the fire station, just because you mentioned it, you said it was on a scale of one to 10, but I didn't see, so they...
The percentages that they're talking about here have to do with insurance.
Okay.
Basically, talks about, there's a certain percentage that you have to reach in order to get a certain percentage on insurance off.
Okay.
But the ISO rating is usually a zero to a 10 rating.
So what is that, 43 to 51%?
That is the, with the insurance.
What is that? Oh, the coverage?
Yes.
It would improve.
It would increase our coverage.
Like the response time.
But that's all based on the response time, and it would increase, okay.
And a town with a layout like ours getting to 100 is not a realistic option.
It's not expected. It's 51%.
Yeah, yeah. I guess that's my question. What's the context of that? Like, where does 51 rank? Is that good? Is it bad? I don't, I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer either.
I have to get.
Yeah. We can certainly have the chief come in and speak to this, because he really enjoys talking about it. But what I would say is that, yeah, it is something that we've been talking about a lot, because basically, there's, there's a few different things that go along with your ISO rating. Some of it is hydrant coverage, right? We know we don't have good hydrant coverage in some areas, but we have a pumper truck, so that offsets some of it. Access to water, we do really well there, so that's great. But then this response time coverage is also really important, and it's something that he's very passionate about, so I think he'd probably be best to speak on it. But really, what it boils down to is, is a score that we get and impacts everybody's insurance.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Andrew, are we in possession of all the funds?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no risk of them not being provided by the federal government?
No.
Great. It's a good question, though.
And I just want to commend the Finance Department. They've been great. They do all the reporting, so...
To keep track of. It's a lot of projects.
Yes, it's a lot of, it's a lot of projects, a lot of money flying around.
And I'm sure it goes with a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, they do great work.
It's great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, we love seeing these. It's nice, because we've been hearing about it for so long, it's just nice to see it all sort of presented in one place, especially for people still wondering what happened to all that.
Right.
We wish it was 93 million bucks. We'll take what we get.
He was teasing us.
All right. So we can move on to Item C, which is the update on the zoning bylaw change and Attorney General's ruling. Not sure.
Well, hand over, Andrew, we just...
Andrew again, all right.
Yes, well, hand over, Andrew, we just, as, as one, just for background, whenever a bylaw goes through town meeting, it then sends to the Attorney General for review. Sometimes they come back with nothing. This time, they came back with something, and so Andrew can explain a little further to you what that means.
Yeah, the, the cover letter I provided basically used the broad strokes. So as the town manager just mentioned, the, so this, the ADU bylaw has been accepted by the AG's office, so we're free to move forward with it. But there were provisions of it that were struck because they were not compliant with the state's new ADU law that they put into place. So those related to, we had a provision in our bylaw that required a special permit be obtained or a variance be obtained if a pre-existing non-conforming property were to have an ADU on it. And we can't require that an ADU go through a special permit process in those cases. So take, for example, if you had, like, a garage unit or a garage structure that was pre-existing non-conforming, and now a homeowner wanted to have an ADU go into that unit, well, you cannot say to that homeowner that they have to go through a special permit process through, say, the Zoning Board of Appeals because of any pre-existing non-conformance that exists in order to put an ADU in that, in that structure. Same goes for if you wanted to put a ADU inside a single-family home that had pre-existing non-conformities. So this striking of that language just stipulates that. There was also an issue with, with respect to parking. We had a very broad approach to our language in there, where we were requiring one parking space per unit. You can require parking, however, you can't require any parking when a, an ADU is located within a half-mile of, say, a transit station, bus station, or other sort of mass transit, you know, station. So ours was a bit too broad. We didn't cover for that, and basically, so they struck that provision as well. One issue also is that we have, you know, we have a flag stop service with MEVA, so I think that we would have to accommodate for, if you're within a half-mile of a MEVA route. Yep, I think we would have to accommodate for not necessarily requiring that a parking space be provided off-street. And then finally, the use table limitations, there were a few zoning districts that, in our zoning bylaw, are not considered single-family home districts, per se, as in, they may not be residential first, they may have other uses that they accommodate for, like commercial uses, but they also technically allow single-family homes. And what we were saying was, if you want a ADU in those districts, you would have to get a special permit, and, and we cannot require that. So any single-family, any zoning district that allows for a single-family home must also by right allow for ADUs.
Is that only if single-family homes are allowed by right, or if they're themselves require a special permit?
I believe it's if they're allowed by right.
Okay.
But I think in this case, they're all allowed by right.
They're allowed by right, okay.
Back to the parking, and you say that it was struck from our document. Does that mean we can't go, like, do we go back and reword it and say...
We can do that. Yeah, we, and, and we actually had a conversation with our Planning Department, Jean Enright, our Planning Director, and, by the way, she did a fantastic job on this bylaw. None of this is an indictment of her work.
That's the only thing. You dropped the rock from the stake, that's pretty impressive.
So, so we're already looking at that, and I think that also, the Planning Director recognizes there's probably some cleanup that needs to be done with our zoning table, our table of uses that kind of better clarifies what's allowed and what districts. But yeah, we're going to have to take a look at whether or not we should restrict parking specifically for properties that are not within those half-mile distances. We can look at that. And there would have to be a town, you know, we'd have to go back to town meeting for that.
But none of this, none of the rest of this doesn't require, let's do it back to town.
Correct, yeah.
Great.
You guys did a good job.
I know.
It was not, you didn't give a lot of guidance to get you to this point, so it's impressive.
Have we had many ADUs since February, or...
I've heard some interest, but I don't think we've actually had an application come through quite yet.
I think we've had one permit.
Not that I'm aware of.
So it didn't cause the, you know, the panic that people...
And people have had the ability to apply for permits since February, so even before town meeting, they could have applied for a permit, because it was allowed. But now all these regulations are in place, the local...
Great. Thank you.
They've all been busy.
All right, Item D, the request from the library to use the Town Common for the Bookmobile Storytime on October 19th, November 2nd, and November 16th, from 9:00 to 12:00. Sounds fun. Good use of our Bookmobile, which is a big...
Do they have ones, the ones that they, we already approved?
They've already had some.
Earlier?
Yes, and they, they've been, they did some, they've been to the, to the farmers market, they've been a few other places. We do have an employee who's been promoted to the Bookmobile, an outreach librarian, and so she's been creating schedules for the Bookmobile as well.
And I think she was also going to look at going to, like, kids' stuff and things like that, like cool, cool stuff, a lot of, it really does help get the library out to, out in the community.
Do they, were they well-attended, the ones, or...
I don't know. Didn't, I didn't hear back.
Well, they're doing more, so.
I don't know. I think it takes a little while.
Yeah, but that's exciting to see it happen.
I saw a little...
Hopefully, the weather continues to cooperate.
Wearing a gown to go to the library.
Love it.
They have the tier programming.
Yeah, it's great. Okay.
I'll move that the Select Board approved their request from the library to use the Town Common for the Bookmobile Storytime on October 19th, 2025, November 2nd, 2025, and November 16th, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item E, to confirm the town manager's appointment of Kathy Schelp as the Director of Human Services. We have to hand this over to Melissa.
Thank you. It's a little bit cock for horse, because I'm going to get into what the plan is for moving forward. Dee's first job in day and week field was today, and so we're slowly getting used to not having her here and coming up with our plan. I have made the decision not to fill the deputy town manager position, and so one of the things that you'll see later is that we have decided to create a Director of Human Services position, which will be a shared position with the Council on Aging Director's position, so no new position there, but a promotion. Kathy has agreed to accept that, which we're all very excited about. The group who are in that division are very happy to be staying together. They like the synergy that they have, they enjoy working together, and so we're all really excited about this new opportunity.
Will you tell us which division, what's in the, who's in the division?
So it's veterans, library, senior center, am I missing one? Youth center. Ooh, I've already forgotten, Rick, sorry, Rick.
You could never forget the youth center.
Human Resources used to be in that division, but they're actually going to be broken out, which you'll see later when we look at the org chart, and they'll be directly reporting to the town manager's office. But, yeah, this is, this is going to be great. She's already stepped into it last week, kind of immediately getting calls, and, but she's doing a great job.
Fantastic. It's exciting. All right, I'll take a motion.
I move that the Select Board confirm their town manager's appointment of Kathy Schelp as Director of Human Services.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kathy.
Congrats.
All right. Item F, the request from Veteran Services to use the Town Common from June 14th, 2026 through July 4th, 2026, for the Field of Honor administered by the Exchange Club of the Andovers.
Good evening, members of the Select Board, Jill LeBlanc, Veterans Services Director. Yes, we're sponsoring the Field of Honor, and here to present on that are Rick Blaine and Bob Westcott. Talk a little bit about the changes, just subtle changes, in commemoration of the 250th anniversary of our country.
Bob, you want to join me here?
We're happy to have you.
It's all right. I'm Rick Blaine, a board member of the Exchange Club of Lawrence and the Andovers. With me is Bob Westcott, another board member of our club. The both of us have been very involved, intimately involved with the Field of Honor since the beginning. And a few things, one is, first of all, I want to say how much we have enjoyed doing this here in North Andover, on the north end of the Town Common. I think it's been a mutually beneficial project, and it certainly has been a mutually beneficial relationship. In addition to Joe and the Veterans Services area being extremely helpful, your board has been helpful to us. The town manager's office has been indeed helpful to us, as have other departments, such as the Police Department and the Fire Department, Public Works Department, they've been terrific, they've all been terrific, and we're very appreciative of that. As you may recall, we have been displaying 500 American flags on the North Andover Town Common from, from Memorial Day through Flag Day, so for approximately three weeks. This year, exchange clubs across the country are stepping up their patriotism projects in anticipation or because of, as Joe suggested, the 250th anniversary of our country. So we're here for two requests, really. The first is that we would like to request changing the date, so that instead of going from Memorial Day through Flag Day, we would like to go from Flag Day through the Fourth of July and have our celebration on the Fourth of July, along with the other activities that go on, on the North Andover Town Common, which I know are pretty extensive most years. And so that's one of our requests. The other request is, we'd love to figure out a way that you, as a board, or you as a town, can help us to promote this project a little bit more than we have, than you have in the past, helping us to sell and dedicate more flags than we've done, and we really could use your help that way. We had suggested, and I don't think it's going to work, but we had suggested perhaps you could include a little flyer in the, in the water bills that go out promoting it. We're told that we can't do solicitation that way, and I understand that. Perhaps you might consider a little flyer that just says something about, for more information on dedicating a flag, contact such and such, so it's not an actual solicitation. We'd ask that you might consider that. Or that you might consider doing something with the wonderful newsletter that Melissa's office puts out to help us promote this as well. As I said, the promotion is both to get people to come and enjoy this Field of Honor. It's, it's, it's a wonderful experience for people who come to visit it, and it's a wonderful experience for us when people come to visit it. We've heard so many wonderful stories from people that have dedicated flags and, and others that have just come to enjoy the field. And so anyways, that's, that's our, those are our requests, moving the date and asking your consideration for how you might be able to help us promote this a little bit more.
Melissa, are we allowed to put it in the newsletter?
So that, yeah, the issue we run into is that if we do it for one nonprofit, we should do it for all, and so, and for other groups as well, and so it comes an equal time issue.
Understood.
Yeah, and so that's where we run into the problem. Joe and I can chat about maybe some creative solutions, like we've done with the banners and that kind of thing, but we're not collecting money for those, so it's a little bit harder. So we'll, we'll talk offline, see if we can come up with any solutions.
Appreciate that.
Well, we did it for the Rees for over 30 years.
But we collect that money, right?
It's for the town. It's like an outside organization.
So that's the difference. For the Rees, the money all comes into the town, and then the town spends it, but this is an outside organization, so we do it for them, and then another organization wants us to come, we have to do it for them, too.
Do the work for them.
Agree to post it.
Agree to, yeah.
So we just have to be careful. It becomes, it becomes a flag issue, right?
Definitely.
Yes, and so I just want to be careful about what we, that's why we usually say no. But we will, we'll think about how we can, I think, like, I personally will work to make sure to get the word out for you.
Nothing's stopping us from doing individually and personally.
Yeah, we can individually do it.
We have a pretty, we have a pretty robust social media presence. Our email disro has grown immensely. I mean, we do get the word out, but I mean, something, maybe early on, and maybe a little more consistent.
Just a little pressure on the social circles.
Yeah, so, and that's why I worded my request the way I did, that if we can't do that one suggestion, we would ask you to consider what we can do, and now Melissa has said, Joe will talk about it.
It is the 250th of the country, and the Navy, the, I think it's the birth of the Navy, too, at least that's what they were putting on TV.
The Army, Navy, and the Marine Corps, all within...
All together, all around the same time. It would be a shame to let that opportunity go by. We've got to come up with something.
Pretty much the 250th is about the Declaration of Independence.
Right, right.
So that's, that's the 250th anniversary thereof.
And this year, our field will include some banners celebrating the 250th specifically.
The Fourth of July, the Common is used for other things. Is there any, there's enough room? No, no, I don't think friction, I think there's enough.
I think where we're located, right along Mass Ave, right across the street, right across the street from the Historical Society, and by the way, that's another organization that's been very helpful to us. I think where we're located, I don't think that conflicts with anything else.
I don't either, but I just want everybody to be aware that there's a law that happens on the...
Who organizes the other activities on the common? Is it the festival committee?
Festival committee.
We'd be happy, Melissa, to meet with them and make sure, make sure everything's coordinated.
I think they add, it would add to their program.
Yeah, I think it would be great.
Was there any opportunity for us to cross-promote using, you know, through the festival committee? And is that a, does it give the same thing as an overall events?
Yeah, I will, so we'll chat.
Appreciate it. Okay?
Definitely.
Bob had something else.
Well, you have to know, we do raise money. That's our intention. And last year, we gave money to two veterans groups and two homeless shelters out of this. And we're about to give a donation to Post 8 of the American Legion, which will help them send kids to Boys and Girls State. And as an alum of Boys, Boys State, I think that's a real cool program. But we do have to raise money. There are expenses, obviously, with putting up the field. But we're also hoping, we built a special display board. We didn't, we didn't set it up this year. Originally, we were going to have poems and things by the kids in the schools. And the superintendent at the time helped us, and they sent them out, and we put forms everywhere. And I, trouble is, we conflicted with two other poetry contests going on at the same time and didn't realize that. But we are going to do some, some outreach and promotion to see kids get more involved with the history part. And one of the things that we would add fairly simply, but is we'll be handing out copies of the Declaration and probably a little booklets that include the Constitution. But something where every visitor will feel a little bit more attached. But the, we try to serve all three communities, but there's no question that being in North Andover has been the best possible. And we have tried and tried to find a way to have the field in Andover, but.
We're very happy to have it.
You are just the best.
We're delighted to host. You drive by, it could be from early in the morning until dark is dark, and you still see those colorful flags.
Yeah, yeah.
And I get emotional when I, when you see them.
I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that. And by the way, all of the money that our club raises, all of the money that we raise is distributed to nonprofits or to, in the community. We, you know, we have a different account for operations, but fundraising all goes into our community account, and all of it is distributed to help the community.
Thank you.
So thank you all.
Thank you. Good work.
Now, are we going to hear something back about whether we're going to conflict with anything else?
Joe and Melissa are going to talk, and then we'll also talk to the festival committee.
So I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board approves the request from Veteran, Veteran Services to use the Town Common from June 14th, 2026 through July 4th, 2026 for the Field of Honor administered by the Exchange Club of the Andovers.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
July 4th is on Saturday, so.
Oh, that's a good day.
Great. Okay, on to item G, a vote on the fiscal year '27 budget calendar, including the date of town meeting.
So exciting.
Superbowl right now.
I'm so excited. I was super excited today because the cabinet approval instructions went out, and I was like, oh, it's happening. So yes, this is our fiscal year '27 budget calendar, which means the town meeting will be on May 12th, 2026.
Mark your calendars now.
Yep, going to be fun. And this gets us started, so we kicked off today, pretty much. And we'll be seeing a lot of you with all of our members coming up soon.
It's actually crazy how fast it goes once it kicks off. It's really quite a process. All right.
All right, I'll move that the Select Board approves the fiscal year '27 budget calendar and set the date for town meeting as May 12th, 2026.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Item H is to vote on our fiscal year '27 goals. So we spent a long time working through all of these together a couple of weeks ago. And I don't know if you want to talk about it. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Yep, we just, we went through. We, we put in some new deliverables. We assigned the lead based mostly on the different people that brought them forward. But I think we all know, we all kind of work on them together anyway. But I prioritized them the best that I could. I hate putting a low priority on anything because I don't want anybody to think anything's a low priority. But in order to give the staff kind of a way to determine what to work on first, we do that. We carried forward some from last year. And what happens now is that we use these to create the budget, and also they'll be, they're basically used as a policy document moving forward.
Did everyone ever give a look, make sure they didn't change from the last time we talked about it? No, we're all good. All right. So I will take a motion.
I move the Select Board approve the fiscal '27 goals as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item I, our town manager evaluation. We have all had the joy of spending some time evaluating Melissa over the last couple of weeks. And thank you to Carrie for compiling all of that for us. And we want to take some time tonight to talk a little bit about that. Ooh, anybody want to start? If you would like to make a comment, I would, yeah.
Yeah, I figured, all I just wanted to do is write the number five. I mean, really, it's been just terrific working with you. Again, we're thrilled you're here to stay for, you know, for several years.
I checked again today to make sure of that.
You know, speaking personally from, you know, having spent some time as chair and getting to know you better and working alongside you, it, you know, it really is a partnership in a lot of ways of the work you provide to us. The guidance, always ready and able with information. And if not, you're able to quickly get it and know it, and the follow-up's great. And I guess we're thrilled that you're here.
I'll speak too. It's a little different than probably what we've done before, but I'm just always amazed that you are, I mean, you are definitely a true leader. You, you lead the staff with a smile, warm words, "How you doing?" And, and it makes it a happy place to work. And you should be very proud of that. And I, and I truly like that that's how the town has come together, that they, they all always seem to be relatively happy and a smile on their face. And you go around, "Hi, how you doing?" To this one and that one. And, and it's good leadership. It's really good leadership to, to honor and praise your staff because they seem to really like it. So, good work.
I'll just say, I, it's a very difficult job, and you do it exceptionally well. I think I'm constantly personally impressed, and I think the town is incredibly lucky to have you, so.
Thank you.
So to build off what Rosemary said, you've done such an incredible job building your team and bringing up the team and helping, you know, create a place that everybody wants to work and is appreciated. And I think we've really benefited from your ability to plan. We've definitely hit bumps in the road, and you always have a plan. Or if you don't, you create a plan.
Figure it out.
And you help us figure it out, and we are so grateful for that because we, we wouldn't be where we are today if you didn't have that ability, whether it was with the schools or whatever. We definitely, we had some struggles there, the floods and.
Fires, don't forget fires.
Fires, yeah, the brush fires. So we've had our fair share of things since you've started here. So we really appreciate your dedication and your planning and your look towards the future.
I would echo what everybody else has already said. But I think a big part of this is that you also are always willing to give credit to your team. You all work together truly, and you empower them to do their jobs and do them well and give them the tools to do that. That, that is leadership. So again, we're really lucky to have you here. I definitely echo what Laura said. I mean, the planning piece of it has paid off in ways that, you know, we can't even. I can't imagine what it would be like if we were not as prepared as we were for all of the challenges that have come our way, so. Just.
Not your fault.
Definitely not. But thank goodness we're here to help. So all in all, yeah. All in all, we just, you know, want to say thank you and let you know that we see the good work that happens every day, and we are very appreciative of that, so.
Thank you. I feel like I say the same thing every year, but.
We all, we all.
Give me, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. And I feel like I'm just very lucky to be where I am, and I have such an amazing team, and it goes such a long way to have those supports in place from my board. I tell people all the time, you're very lucky when you have a good board, so I'm very lucky. But it's much from my staff, who are just the best, all the way down. But I will say, it would be nice if we could have one year without a state of emergency. We were, we were in negotiations with.
Not talk about it.
You said it was quiet all of a sudden.
We were in, with DPW the other day, and they kept saying the word tornado. And I was like, I feel like it's Beetlejuice. We're going to summons it. Like, no more. Don't know when I'll say that word again. But, you know, while there has been, I think, trials, it has brought the team closer together, absolutely. And it's been interesting enough that it's always been kind of a different department that appears to be having that, that issue at that time. So I've, we've gotten to work really closely with a lot of different people, so it's been, it's been really nice, so, thank you.
Well, you're well experienced in what you do with a short notice catastrophe. Like water all over the place.
Yeah, we're ready to go in a moment's notice.
That's right, always.
Thank you.
So thank you. So on that note, I will take a motion.
I'll move the Select Board approve the town manager evaluation for performance from September 16th, 2024 through September 16th, 2025.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, just do it again.
Last kudos, keep it up. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item J, the vote to waive the right of first refusal for 180 Chickering Road, Unit 204C. So this is just standard.
Yeah, we've got a unit coming up for sale. We have Chappa do our affordable housing units. We don't really have anybody in-house that does that.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
Move at the Select Board waive the right of first refusals for 180 Chickering Road, Unit 204C.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to our consent items. We have three items tonight. To accept a donation from Brook School in the amount of $35,000 for fire department gear and equipment. To accept a donation from the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, Inc. in the amount of $27,917.50 for Youth Center scholarships. It's an odd number. And accept donations to the Holiday Decorating Committee for Holiday Reeds in the amount of $6,620.
That's the amount they raise from Night to Shine, right? Yeah.
No, it's for Youth Center scholarships, so for members, right, for, is that?
Yeah, the money came from the Night to Shine event, didn't it?
Oh, probably some of it, yeah.
From the Night to Shine event, yes.
It's the odd number.
It's like what they've been expecting from that.
50 cents.
So, I'll take a motion.
I'll move the Select Board accept all consent items with our thanks.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? As usual, with our thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item, oh, approval of minutes. So I would move, we have to approve open session minutes of September 8th, September 18th, and September 22nd. So does anybody have a chance to look at them? Review. Okay.
How come we got backed up almost again?
Because we, our last was.
Remote?
Was not, it was a public meeting, but not televised, so we did it till then.
It's the clerk's fault.
So we made it till it was on television. So, all right, everybody's had a chance to review them. All right, then I will take a motion.
Move at the Select Board approve the open session minutes of September 2nd, 2025, September 18th, 2025, and September 22nd, 2025 as presented.
I think it's September 8th. I think it's printed in our motion book.
It is the 8th, yes.
Thank you.
And the 18th.
It is, yeah.
8th, 18th, 22nd, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Heading to Select Board updates. Anybody?
Lake Kachikwick cleanup day was Saturday. Great turnout. Thank you to Tony, Amy Maxner, Zach Melcher was there, Paul Hutchins was there. It helped that the weather was very cooperative. It was nice and warm. We had some folks in the water. Our former harbor master was in the water, working. He was pointing.
And he wore a hat bar.
Well, it actually, as, as low as the lake water is, it actually exposed a whole lot of stuff that, I mean, I think he said found a Billy Budd beer can from, God knows how long, how long that's been in the water because all the shorelines were seated. So we were able to get a whole bunch of stuff out of the lake, and we should be doing this kind of regularly. So it is our drink water. A lot of, did not find a lot of plastic bags. I will say that.
That's great.
So.
I've done it before and found a lot of plastic bags, so. All right, other updates?
So Kidridge School Building Committee continues to meet. We just went through a value engineering exercise with our design team. So it continues to move forward, schematic design, getting towards our meeting approvals. Very exciting.
Value engineering for content, for design, for?
For like different item, design items, like types of flooring and. Trying to think, like landscaping and, you know, are we going to use pavement for all the sidewalks or concrete, that kind of stuff?
Very good.
Incredible amount of witch-related historical events from the Historical Society. Too many to itemize. Check out their web. Check out the Historical website for all those great programming.
Awesome. I want to extend thank you to Melissa and Lori and Andrew, the rest of the team, for helping us get through the farmer's market. It was a great season. It's over. Last Sunday was great. I drank coffee on my couch. So, yeah, so thank you to everybody that made it happen. It was a really successful year for us. So we'll plan, we'll start next week, planning next year, so. Thanks.
Melcher, may I congratulate Eva Homory for.
Of course.
For getting the, I don't know what the, tell me, what is the, the name of the?
Eva's Award.
Eva's Award for.
The Preservation, Lifetime Preservation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, yes, she was the, the 2025 North Andover Historical Society Lifetime Preservation Award winner.
And she loved it. Her family, her family came, all the, they all came. And her friends from high school, her friends from college, and she's well-deserved.
Absolutely.
Well, well, well-deserved.
Very good.
When you see Eva, say congratulations.
Very nice. All right. Moving on to town managers' report.
Yeah, we've got lots going on today. So just a reminder, Employee Appreciation Lunch is the 14th, so all non-essential buildings will be closed on the 14th from 12 to 2:00. I want to congratulate John Lavin, who's retiring. His last day is tomorrow. His last day is tomorrow. I, we tried to refuse to accept the retirement, but he's still going. So, yeah, we are going to miss him very much. We're trying to convince him to come back in the summer. We'll see. But just wanted to make you all aware of that. There's lots of kind of routine stuff in here, some non-routine. We have sent a letter to Mast dot asking them to remove that new pedestrian island on Route 125. The fire police chief are less than impressed and concerned about how they would get an emergency vehicle passed. So we have sent them a letter. We have not heard back yet on that, unfortunately, but I will keep you posted. And there is a copy of the letter in the packet, if anyone at home is interested. It is flu season time, so make sure that you please get your flu shots, and we have a bunch of those available if you are interested in doing that. We have also received a financial report from the school department. That's attached as well. Their next report will be in October. They are trying to get through a few more payroll cycles, according to their letter, and then we'll get us more information.
So I didn't see any numbers. There's no real numbers in that, right? So, okay.
And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about what our plan is now that we no longer will have the deputy town manager position. So there is an organizational chart in the package that shows basically that Human Resources is being broken off into its own division. It probably makes, makes sense, so we, we're happy to see that happening. And then Facilities is actually going to fall under Laurie. So they're very excited about that, and they asked so 10 times, "Am I going to be under Laurie?" All excited. So they're going under Laurie, so that's going to be great. Carrie, our Human Resources Director, will be taking on all the negotiations. She already took on lead for the two that we have recently settled, and that will be coming before you soon. She's doing a great job. Laurie's going to be taking on all of our property liability and casualty insurance. So previously, the risk management, Dee was doing that previously. Laurie is taking that on. Andrew is taking on the opioid programming that Dee was previously doing, and so he's already had his first meeting with. already had his first meeting with that group. The RecPlex will be Lori's, they fought over it, there was a thumb war, but Lori won, so, yeah, so Lori will have the RecPlex.
Wait, were they fighting on which?
I'm not gonna tell. Yeah. I'm not telling. Yeah. So Lori, Lori is the RecPlex now, it's gonna be great. Citizens Academy that we're working on for next fall, Lori and Andrew are taking that on together, so we're gonna be rolling that out in the fall, next fall. All of our OSHA compliance is going to be at DPW now, which is good. The farmer's market is gonna be Lori, but it's gonna fall on Nicole and Sarah, who already started it today. Yep. Facilities will be Lori. Performance evaluations are now currently all being reviewed by me and Lori will be the liaison to the Fields Committee. And so we've, we, I'm sure there'll be more things that are gonna pop up as we go and we're like, what, Dee did that? Right now though, we feel like we have a pretty good handle on everything and, yeah, and everybody has really stepped up as they always do to meet the challenge. We all love doing something new, so it'll be, it'll be fun. Yeah, so, so that's the plan moving forward.
Can I plug something about the opioid program?
You can.
In my new duties, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, we have a survey that is available to anybody who would be willing.
I got the mailers.
So you got the mailers? Okay, so that went out by mail, so there's postcards in the mail with links to the survey. You can come by Town Hall, there are postcards here. There are also hard copy surveys available at Town Hall, the library and the, and the senior center. And, yeah, if you don't mind just getting it out to your networks, it'll help inform how we want to utilize the opioid settlement funding. That'd be great. Thanks.
And there's gonna be a flashbulb coming out, not about opioids, but a mystery topic. We don't want to tell anybody, we like to let them, everybody get buzzed up on what